Without you. And the last one's a use.
So should be okay?
I hope so. Okay, Chairman, we're gonna wait one more minute. We're waiting for the TV guys to. Do their thing. Okay, she just yelled, we're good. Give me one second. Okay, ready to go, Chairman?
Oh, thank you. The zoning board of adjusted meeting please come to order. Adequate notice notice of this meeting was provided in the following ways. Notice published in the Korean news, notice published on the Bolton Board of the Minister. Notice made available to township clerk. Notice sent to the Korean news and Star Ledger. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Here.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Blount? Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Here.
Mr. Ellie?
Here.
And Steve Weissman.
Here. Thank you. Will everyone please stand for the salute to the flag? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Mr. Caneli, are there any changes to tonight's agenda?
There are many changes to tonight's agenda. The Santiago matter will be adjourned until September fourteenth. Have to notice the newspaper in the port of Ed. If you receive the notice, you will not receive a new notice. Eleven Street Partnership is adjourned till September twenty eighth with no further notice. Bronco Development one forty six Hillside adjourned to September twenty eighth, no further notice. Bronco Development one sixty Hillside Avenue. Adjourned to September twenty eighth, no further notice. One hundred Lakeview. One hundred Lakeview Rear adjourned till October twelfth, no further notice. L N R.
I just need the volume up.
Is adjourned until September twenty eighth, no further notice. Those are all the changes I'm aware of.
Correct, Mr. Caneli.
Okay, that was pretty quick. I hope I called them all. If I don't, please correct me if I asked for one.
I have a list.
Right along here.
All right, so let's start at number five.
Yes. It got buried. Fifteen, twelve. Eight, nine. Here we go. I'm sorry, this is not my normal office I'm at. No, item, item five, twenty-three dash Z B dash six seven V. Andrea Calabrese? Is she here?
Yes. Hi, Gian Sullivan. I'm an attorney with the offices of Vastola and Sullivan, representing Ms. Calabrese. I actually have her here in my office, so she'll come on screen just a moment. Assuming we have jurisdiction. Thank you. Street address is four forty Webster Avenue. It is lot eighteen point oh one in block one zero zero three on your tax map. The property is located in an R seven, seven point five zone. Has a lot area of seventy-five hundred square feet. And is fully improved with a single family dwelling, an attached garage, and a deck to the rear. What brings you, brings us before you tonight? Are bulk variances to permit the site essentially to remain as it is now? And we do need variances for building coverage. Twenty percent is permitted under the ordinance and existing is twenty-one percent. And second is for the rear yard setback for the deck. Twenty-five feet is permitted and fifteen point four feet are proposed and existing. All of this is pre-existing. We're not proposing any new development. We have submitted a survey paired by Robert Horvath dated May first of this year and several site photographs. And I do have Ms. Calabrese here. I'll ask her to come on screen. And if we can get her sworn in, I will have her give you the particulars.
Ma'am, could you raise your right hand, please? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Your name and address, please?
Andrea Calabrese, four forty Webster Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Calabrese, you are the owner of the property at four forty Webster Avenue?
Correct.
And how long have you owned that since?
Of forty, it was in nineteen seventy-seven, so forty-six years.
Okay, and you live there?
I'm sorry?
Do you live there?
Yes, I do.
And the house itself, is it the same footprint as when you purchased it in nineteen seventy-seven?
That's correct.
You did not put on any additions?
Did not.
But you did construct a deck in the rear yard in approximately nineteen ninety-one, is that correct?
That's correct.
And you learned through the town that you needed a variance that deck?
That's right.
And as part of that, you learned about the variance condition for the building coverage? Now, the deck has been there since nineteen ninety-one?
That's right.
And you provided several photographs showing the the rear yard deck?
That's right.
What is the height of that deck?
Approximately a foot, foot and a half.
And what are the dimensions in terms of width and depth?
About fifteen and a half by fifteen.
And your entire rear yard is fenced in?
Yes, it is.
Have you had any had any issues with the neighbors due to the deck location?
None whatsoever.
And has your property experienced any drainage issues like ponding and things of that nature?
No, it hasn't.
And could you just briefly describe your neighborhood?
Certainly, it's on a dead end street. There are probably only seven houses on the street. There are four on my side and three on the opposite side. There, it's a mix of ranches, bi-levels, and split levels. And it's a very quiet, typical neighborhood.
And your home is a one-story?
That's correct.
And it's three bedrooms and one bath?
That's right.
And it's not larger than the other houses in the neighborhood, is it?
No, it is not.
Mr. Hinterstein's report, condition number three, is that you would not enclose this with a roof, walls, or any other type of overhead structure?
I would not, no, I wouldn't.
Okay, and you agree to that condition?
Yes, I do.
That's all I have for Ms. Ms. Calabrese.
Thank you. Do you have anyone else?
No.
Okay, Henry, do you want to comment here?
Really, there, I, in my report, I pretty much reiterate many of the, many of the things that were just stated by Mr. Sullivan and Mrs. Calabrese. The deck is only about a foot off the ground. I don't see really any issue with it. There's a solid fence that surrounds the property that provides buffer and screening. And the coverage variance is the minimus in my opinion, so I don't really see any issues with the variances other than, especially if they're agreeing to the condition that if, that they will not enclose the the deck. So, that being said, I think it's, it's an okay application.
Thank you. Anyone on the board have any questions, concerns, statements you'd like to make at this time? Hearing none, I would like to open up this to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time? Laura?
No one, Chairman?
Okay, I'd like to close the public portion of the, of this application. And I would like to make a notion, a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second? Thank you, already. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Here.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan, we will memorialize this at our next meeting and send the copy to you.
Thank you very much. Well, I'm gonna be back in it for another hearing a few minutes. Thank you.
We'll see you later.
See you soon. Okay, moving on. Item number six, twenty-three Z B seven four B. Daniel Piper, if I'm pronouncing it correctly? Is he here?
They need to unmute. There we are.
Oh, I see him. I see Arlene Piper. Daniel, are you here?
They're here. But we can't hear them.
They're not muted, right?
No.
I don't see him muted.
They are not muted. Okay, I guess they're having technical difficulties. If you want to move on to the next one?
Yeah, let's, we'll come back to them.
Yep, number eight.
Number eight, thank you. Hello? Okay, number eight, twenty-three Z B fifty-seven D, Carolyn Gorm. You here?
Yeah, she's here.
Yeah.
Hi, we, we are here.
Yeah, they are.
That is the Gorm fam, okay.
And for anybody that's gonna be testifying tonight, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
One at a time, could I have your name and address, please?
Caroline Gorm, sixteen forty-eight Short Street, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Put your hands down. And your, your name, sir?
Robert Johnson, and my address is sixty-six King George Road, Warren, New Jersey.
Thank you. Could one of you explain to the board what you'd like to do with this property?
Yes. We have a variance on a table to discuss a shed that's on the property, a canopy, and a fence that's on the property right now. The fence has been on the property for, do you know how long?
Since two thousand and nine.
Since two thousand and nine. We've recently had some curves and sidewalks installed along Maple Street for the park that's across the street from Mrs. Gorm. The issue with the fence is, was that it, it's a bit close to the street. However, the unique shape of the property doesn't allow the fence to be within the normal setbacks of the, the actual property lines. The, the house itself sits less than thirty feet from the actual street. And the height of the fence is, is, it's about sixty-two inches in height. The good thing about the fence is that it's actually on the side of the house and it's about sixty feet. It's less than sixty feet from the actual intersection of Short Street and, and Maple Street. It's actually Short Street, Maple Street, and, and Street. So the fence doesn't create any blind spots or impede the visibility of that intersection at all. Mrs. Gorm actually needs this fence for privacy in her backyard. And it does create a little bit of security and protection for her home. As for the two sheds, the, the shed is in the rear corner of the property. It doesn't sit against anyone's home. It's, it's a PVC fence and it's, it's rubber made shed. It's, it's, was created and set on a, on a concrete foundation. And as for the canopy, the canopy sits, also sits behind the fence in the rear of the yard. And it's actually, can't be seen from the street due to foliage, trees, and trebery that's on that side of the property. And that, that's really all we had for the property. Do you have anything that you wanted to say?
Thank you. Henry, you have a comment on this? You're muted, okay.
Yeah, this is a unique property. The majority of the property is front yard. It's not even, it's not even a rectangular, it's just sort of a irregular shape. Property with, again, frontage along Short Street as well as a long frontage along Maple Street. The township recently undertook some road improvement projects, as was stated in the area, which caused the roadway to be, you know, closer and the, the curb line to be closer now. Send the right away, but it's, it's closer to the fence than when it was originally installed. Again, this is really such a unique shaped lot, and there's really very, very limited space on this property. If the fence was not to be located where it is along the Maple Street frontage. That being said, it is close to the right of way, but I don't see really, I, I think the inherent hardships here really allow this application to, to be looked at, looked upon favorably. The shed is, is, in my opinion, is a very modest shed. It's in the back corner. It is screened by the existing fence, similar to the canopy. My only concern would be that for some reason, the shed, again, or the canopy is destroyed and has to be relocated. It should be, they should be relocated in a conforming location, not just put in without permits. So, again, the condition would be is they're fine for now, if it's approved, but if they are destroyed or replaced, they need to be located in a conforming location. And the canopy should not be should not be enclosed, or it should not be converted to a more permanent structure. The canopy is really more of a sort of a portable. It's not really a permanent type canopy. It's one that you can set up. You could easily take it down, so I'm not too concerned with it, but my opinion is it shouldn't be converted to a more permanent type of structure that's anchored with, with footings or anything of that nature, or any permanent walls put up to enclose that, that canopy space. That being said, I don't have any issues with the application as long as there's an agreement to that condition.
We're in agreement.
Thank you. That was, answered my question. Anyone on the board have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time?
No one, Chairman?
Thank you. I would like to close the public portion of this meeting. And I would like to make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thank you, Mr. Tillery. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved. We will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
Have a good night.
Good night.
You too, thank you.
Thank you. The pipe is here. Did they get the problem fixed?
They're here, but you can't hear them, no.
Yeah, we see them but cannot hear them. Okay, we'll, we'll come back. Next item.
They should sign off and sign back up.
Number nine?
Yes.
G and A Properties, Property Development. That's twenty-three Z B five-five fifty-five V. G and A Property Development LLC.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, members of the board. My name is Kevin Morse, Woodbridge, New Jersey, and I'm the attorney representing the applicant, G and A Property Development LLC. The subject property is block six fourteen lot three point oh one, located at four forty-seven Washington Avenue. And we are before you this evening requesting certification of a long existing use of the property, namely a mixed-use building that has a commercial unit in the front and a single apartment in the rear. Seeking certification that this board determined that that is a lawful pre-existing non-conforming use of the subject property. I previously submitted our affidavits of publication and mailing and wanted to confirm that they have been received, that they're in order, in order that the board has jurisdiction to proceed.
They have been received and reviewed. They are in order and the board has jurisdiction.
All right, thank you, Mr. Caneli. I have two witnesses available. First, Kristen Antonelli, who is a principal of the applicant. I have sitting next to me Angela Valletudo, who is our licensed professional engineer and professional planner. Now, by way of some background for the board, and I try to go through this very succinctly. The property was acquired, and I will get confirmations for you under oath by the applicant. The, the property was acquired by the applicant in twenty twenty-one. The applicant's principles are Giovanni and Kristen Antonelli. Kristen is present again, and we'll swear her for some confirming information. But when they bought the property, it was a mixed-use building, again, as I've described, a commercial unit in the front and a apartment in the rear. The commercial unit had just been vacated. There's an office use in there, and the applicant put a business called The Wax Studio by Anna, Anna in the commercial unit. And that business, Wax Studio, personal service business, certainly a conforming use in the season, the property located began operating. The apartment had just been vacated. There was an elderly tenant who had passed away. And before they put someone in that, the township determined there was a question as to whether or not this site never had any for formal site plan approval for the use, and so they held off on re-renting the apartment. The Wax Studio by Anna was in operation, and members of the board may recall that operator appeared before you back in August of twenty twenty-two and obtained a temporary use permit so that she could continue operation of the studio business. I was then engaged to review the status of the property, do some research. And I did obtain from the Township Tax Assessor's Office the revaluation cards from both nineteen fifty-six and nineteen seventy-four, which were submitted as part of the application package as attachments to the application form. Now, both of those revaluation cards show that the subject property contained a mixed-use building, again, a, a commercial unit and a residential apartment. And in looking at the, in particular, the nineteen fifty-six rebuild, re- revaluation card, which is part of the application packet. That would show that this is mixed used as configured for sixty-seven years to date. And in fact, if you look at the nineteen fifty-six revaluation card, it shows there was a barber shop and an apartment on that. That card is particularly important because it also describes that the property itself had been in existence for thirty years. So if we take what we contend is the mixed-use building thirty years prior to that, we're looking at potentially ninety-seven years of the property, almost a century in that configuration. I would call Kristen Antonelli, who is the principal of the applicant. If she could be sworn, please, I see that she is logged in so she can confirm some information.
Ms. Antonelli, could you raise your right hand?
Sure.
Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Kristen Antonelli, eighth Saddle Mount Avenue, Warren, New Jersey, zero seven zero five nine.
Thank you.
Right now, Kristen, you are one of the owners of the applicant together with your husband Giovanni, correct?
Yes.
Now, you've been logged in and you've listened to my presentation, the background information and description I have given with regard to your acquisition of the property and your use of the property since you have acquired it, correct?
Yes.
Is everything that I've described for the board, is that absolutely true and accurate in every respect?
Yes, it is.
Right now, by way of some background for the board, your family, you've been members of the Piscataway Business Community for about forty years now, correct?
Yes.
Okay, I understand that your husband is the second generation owner of a business. I think a lot of people are familiar with Capelli's Hair Salon, which is a property close to this property, correct?
Yes.
And you're here this evening because your, your family enjoys a longstanding good business neighbor relationship in the community, and you're before the board because you want to continue to maintain that relationship and straighten out or resolve any issues with regard to the subject property, which is a new property for you, correct?
Yes.
And to that end, you engaged Angelo Valletudo, who prepared what we called an existing conditions plan. And you also had the opportunity to review the memo that's been generated by the Township Division of Engineering Planning and Development, correct?
Yes.
Okay, so I have no further questions of Ms. Antonelli. I wanted to confirm the information I presented. And I have Angelo Valletudo prepared to address the memo and just to give some additional information for the board's consideration. And Ms. Antonelli will be available during the entire hearing should a question come up.
Is Mr. Valletudo present?
He is. He's sitting next to me. You can barely see him. And I would call him next if you could slide over a little bit.
I'm always in his shadow.
Mr. Valletudo, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir, I do.
Your name and address, please?
For record, Angelo J. Valletudo. V A L E T U T T O, Licensed Professional Engineer, Licensed Professional Planner in the state of New Jersey.
And Mr. Chairman, Mr. Valletudo has appeared before this board on numerous occasions, and his accomplishments have been accepted.
Thank you. He's accepted.
All right, and again, I'd like to confirm that will be at his capacity as both professional engineer and professional planner, to be commenting in both regard.
Yes.
Okay, thank you. All right, so now, Mr. Valletudo, you prepared, and we submitted what we called an existing conditions plan for the subject property, correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. And as always, engineers would be nothing without the surveyor who did the basic. So we use that as our basis.
And now, the reason you were engaged, even though we're seeking a certification and not seeking a site plan approval, is because we wanted to demonstrate that the site itself, which contains the existing mis-mixed-use building, actually supports that use, and it sort of makes sense. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, correct.
All right, now, also, it further confirms, at least from what I understand, that from an engineering or a site standpoint, the township's tax records and the way the property is configured are, are true and accurate with regard to the mixed-use building. Is that right?
That is correct. As you indicated, the, the earliest it goes back to is fifty-six, and at that time, it called the building was age of approximately thirty years. We have to go back to fifty-three, so we're more than beyond that point, in my opinion.
All right, now, we had the opportunity to review the applicant, with the applicant, excuse me, the memorandum dated January sixth, January eighteenth, twenty twenty-three by the Township's Division of Engineering Planning Development, correct?
Yes, sir, we did.
Now, typically, you know, when we, when we're here on a certification case and not a site plan approval, I suppose technically the board does not have the authority often to impose conditions. But in speaking with the applicant, applicant, and certainly in the spirit of cooperation and consistent with the applicant's intent to continue to be a good business neighbor in the community, the applicant is prepared to comply with the requested improvements, which are set forth as items two through five in that memorandum. Is that correct?
That's correct. And really, the basis for us when we did the plan, showing it as existing conditions, we wanted to show that it can support the use in terms of the ability for off-street parking. We did show striping, but that, again, was to show the board and its professionals that we can meet the off-street parking, and we could also meet the various comments in Mr. Hinterstein's report in terms of the parking, the handicap parking, and dedicating spaces, two spaces for the tenant. And certainly, number five, any condition on the property or along its frontage that needs repair will be repaired.
Okay, and again, while these changes don't require a site plan approval, this applicant, again, just in, in terms of enhancing the property, making it better since their purchase was really prepared to do really the things that are suggested by Mr. Hinterstein, just in terms of property maintenance, upkeep, and enhancement. Is that correct?
Yes, sir, that's correct. They want to do everything proper, and which is why we're here this evening.
All right, now, putting on your planner's hat for a moment, you, you reviewed the revaluation cards that were provided to us by the tax assessor and supplied to the board, correct?
Yes, sir.
Right, you visited the property and the surrounding area, correct?
I have.
You've looked and reviewed and, as a professional engineer, the physical structure itself, correct?
Correct, and it's clearly one that while having an advanced stage is in good shape.
All right, but from a planning standpoint, would it be your opinion that the property configuration that we presented, consistent with the tax assessor records, that this, this mixed-use building would have predated the ordinance of nineteen fifty-three?
Most definitely.
All right, but I have no further questions of Mr. Valletudo.
Mr. Chairman, I submitted a report dated June twenty-first, and there are two questions raised in that report. One of them is a statement. I agree that it pre-exists the ordinance. But the other one is the documentation of where the retail or commercial use is in the apartment use is not clear in the application.
All right, now, Mr. Chadwick, I must tell you, we have never received the memo because I would have already All right, now, Mr. Chadwick, I must tell you, we have never received the memo because I would have already uh called upon Mr. Valletudo. To address that, but we're happy to address your comments. Uh, we submitted as part of the application package. An actual um.
Sketch.
Sketch of building layout showing the uh both. The uh. Physical, uh, the room configurations, there's two rooms, it's a sketch in the application packet. For the commercial and then it also shows the configuration of the apartment. Which is a uh one-bedroom apartment with a living room, kitchen, seating area and bath, so that should have been uh part of your application.
For whatever reason, I did not review it. Um, it was probably sent, it's my mistake. But there is a document as part of the file, it would be part of the, if the board approves this. Uh, clear document. The other one, uh, my review of the property showed a lot of. Uh, electric meters, do you know what that's all about?
No, I don't. I, I must tell you, I don't know that Ms. Antonelli, I can ask her knows about that. Uh, they've only owned the property since two thousand and twenty one. Uh, clearly, there are only two units there and we are only seeking certification for two units. I would ask Ms. Antonelli, do you know um the status of the electric meters there?
Um, I can tell you that I, um, that there are two accounts, like two P S E and G accounts. One was from the front and one was from the back, so they're separated, so I can tell you that, that's all I know.
All right, why don't we just leave it just this way, they'll be separate, you, they are, are and will continue to be. Separate utilities to the individual users.
No objection there.
Thank you.
And I apologize, I would not, I would have not glossed over that.
Yes. Anything else, sir?
No.
Mr. Chadwick, okay, thank you. Henry?
I do not have anything. I believe that everything in my report has been addressed, they're willing to comply, so I do not have anything.
Thank you. Uh, Mr. Morse, you have any other?
Uh, I, I won't belabor the testimony. Look, uh, clearly the township's own records bring us back to nineteen fifty six without question. We need that extra three years because the ordinance went in effect in fifty three, but I think all things considered. You know, the separate meters, the configuration of the property, the age of the structure, I think this board can um, I respectfully submit fines. And determine that this mixed use building predates the ordinance. Uh, so that it should be certified as a pre-existing non-conforming use, and if the board were to look favorably again. Although technically, conditions uh uh would not be able to be imposed, this applicant, as we stated. Uh, are willing to agree to the conditions uh as presented by uh Mr. Chadwick and Mr. Hinterstein's member. Uh, their memos, should you look favorably upon the application?
Thank you. Anyone on, on the board, I'd like to open this up to the board. Any members of the board have any questions, concerns or comments at this time?
Hello.
Who's that?
Can you hear me?
We're not doing public yet.
I didn't, I, uh, let the board go first, then I'll open to the public. Hearing no comments from the board. I'd like to open this up to the public. Anyone from the public have any questions, concerns or comments at this time? Now you have an opportunity.
Yes.
Can you please state your name?
I have a question. Uh, Mahmoud Ahmed.
Okay, Mr. I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yeah.
And your address, please?
One thirty-eight Hillside Avenue. Piscataway, New Jersey.
And your question is?
Uh, we had a, a date today, but uh, the password given is wrong and we couldn't get in. My neighbor had the same problem. We couldn't get in to uh put our uh opinion both.
Mr. Caneley, they called, I gave them the correct number, they had it backwards, two A two to get in. You're here for the hillside applications?
Yes, I am.
Yeah, they were postponed till September twenty eighth.
Okay.
Yeah, they're not going forward this evening.
Okay, thank you.
So they will be on for September twenty eighth?
Yeah, so call the office in a few weeks and I'll give you the correct, the, the new Zoom information for you to log on.
Yeah, can you give me the number I should call?
Um, we're, we're in the middle of a meeting, call the office tomorrow that you called earlier.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Anyone else in the public have any comments, questions or concerns?
For this application.
With this application, thank.
No one, chairman.
Ms. Buckley?
No one, chairman.
Thank you. I'd like to close the public portion of uh on this request. And I would like to make a, a motion to approve this application. Meeting all the requirements laid up by Mr. Hinterstein and Mr. Chadwick. Can I get a second?
Arnie.
Arnie.
Thank you, Arnie. Will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Morse will memorialize this at our next meeting and send you a copy. All right, thanks very much, everyone. Have a pleasant evening.
Thank you, have a good evening. Thank you. Uh, chairman?
Yes.
Uh, the pipers are on.
Oh, terrific. Let me get back to the Piper question here.
Hello, can you hear me?
Yes. Are you the pipers?
Okay, yes.
Okay. Raise your right hand? Do you swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Okay, could I have each of your names and addresses?
Daniel Piper, twenty-one Bertrand Drive.
Arlene Piper, twenty-one Bertrand Drive, Piscataway.
Thank you. Could one of you explain to the board why you're here?
We are doing a bulk variance. Because we were told. That the variance has to be done on the house before we can get an approval for a. Addition put on the house.
Okay, Henry, do you have any questions at this point?
Well. The, the applicant came in to, I think, uh, my understanding is to. Submit uh permits for an addition, as he stated. Uh, when we looked at the survey and they did a site inspection of the property, uh, it appeared that there was a deck. Uh, to the rear of the existing garage and also a shed type structure that was added to the side of the garage. Uh, without permit. Um, that's, that's why they're here, is because of those items. Now, can you confirm that the deck from behind the garage, I believe you said it was removed?
Yes, I submitted pictures to that.
Okay, so, yeah, it was tough to see in those pictures, so I just wanted to confirm that the deck was removed. So really, the only issue is the sort of uh addition of sort of that shed to the side of the garage. Um, again, again, this is next to the Bertrand Drive, uh, multi-family development. So there's no, I don't think, structure that that close to the, the side of this property. And there is a solid PVC fence that exists uh on the, on the multi-family side of the development. Um, my concern would be is it appears that you have sort of a dilapidated fence that's up against their fence. Um, you know, fortunately, you can't see it from the other side, but you may want to consider taking that out. And if the board uh finds it favorable or finds the application favorable. My suggestion would be is that they need to submit for a building permit. To make sure that that shed structure was constructed in a, in a manner that's, that's safe. Uh, so that it doesn't um fall on somebody. So, any approval should be conditioned upon them getting a building permit. So that the building department can go out and uh do an inspection of the uh, of the structure. Um, to make sure it's safe. Other than that, I really don't have um. Two, again, the structure appears to have been there for quite some time, again, it was done legally. Um. It, it's really, you know, the board's uh up to the board. Um, I don't see having a huge impact on the neighboring property due to the existing fence that's there. Um, and the shape of the shed, it's, it's ra- relatively um low in nature as far as the height. Um, because it's the height of the garage eve, so. I, I don't see a huge issue with it. My only concern would be is that a building permit be secured. So that we could confirm that uh the structure is safe and sound.
Mr. Mr. Pipe, Ms. Piper, do you understand what Ms. Hinterstein is saying?
Yes.
The fence that's falling down, the townhouse uh put it up. So we would ask them if we can take it down, I guess.
Isn't, didn't they install a vinyl fence on their side?
Um. Yeah, they put that also.
So they put the second fence up without taking the other fence down?
Correct.
Yes, the se- the, the wooden fence was up for quite a while.
Okay. Um, again, I. You may want to contact them then and see if you can work something out with them or see if they don't care that you dispose of it. Um, it's just, as long as it's not falling apart. Uh, I don't have a problem with staying, it's on your side of the property. Uh, if you guys have a, an issue with it. Then uh, since they put up a second fence adjacent to that, my suggestion would be is that. You know, you really don't need that additional fence, it's just going to te- keep uh deteriorating and, and eventually will, will fall apart. Uh, if it hasn't yet, so you may want to contact them uh and see if they'll remove it for you. Uh, on their property.
All right.
And you will pursue a permit for the other structure, correct?
A permit for what structure?
For the shed, right?
Yes, the shed.
Yeah.
We, this is a bulk variance permit, isn't this?
No.
Okay, so.
This, this is a bulk variance. The variance allows you to keep the shed in the location that you built it illegally. It doesn't. It doesn't negate the fact that you didn't take out a building permit for that and the fact that.
We don't, we don't know. There was a building permit taken out for that building because when we moved into the house, it's on the original survey. We've been here for close to thirty years now.
Well, you could find out from the building department, if there was a permit, all you'd have to do is secure that permit that was taken out. And if there's no building permit on file for that, you would then just have to take it out and the building department will do an inspection.
All right, so I guess I'll have to come up tomorrow to. To DPW and find that out.
Yeah, you could always do an Oprah request as well through the clerk's office and ask if any. Um, building permits were ever secured for a shed garage addition. Uh, for the property, if they have any on record, they will email it to you.
Okay, so I have to call, I have to talk to Laura tomorrow?
Yeah, ca- ca- call me tomorrow, we'll, I'll explain what you need to do tomorrow.
Okay.
Thank you. Anyone else on the board have any questions, concerns or comments at this time? Hearing none, I would like to open this to the public. Anyone on the public have any questions, concerns or comments on this request? Laura?
One person, Pat.
Pat?
Hi.
Hi, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Pat Omara, one thirty-nine Keswick Drive, Piscataway.
Thank you.
I'm sorry.
Go ahead, ma'am.
I had a question, I know that you're talking about the structure, but I had received um. Some copies from Laura that it looked like there was an addition being put onto the house itself. At, for twenty-one Bertrand Drive.
Laura, can you?
Yeah, um, yeah, I explained this, I believe I talked to you over the phone. The addition is legal, the variance is not for the addition. The addition is conforming where it's supposed to be, that's legal. The existing structure that was there needed the variance application. So whether they had that shed or not, that addition was going to be legal, we're not here for the addition.
Okay, that's what I just wanted to clarify.
Hmm, yep, so yeah, so the addition's fine, it's conforming, it's perfectly where it's supposed to be, they're just here for the shed only, not for the addition.
Okay, thank you, I just wanted to clarify.
You're so welcome, Pat.
Thank, thank you.
Anyone else in the public?
No one else, chairman?
Thank you, Laura. I'd like to close the public portion of this request. And I'd like to make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
A second.
Thank you, I, I'm, Arnie. Uh, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yeah, yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yeah.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ali?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Your application has been approved, we will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and send that document to you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Have a good night. Moving on to item number ten. That's twenty-three ZB seven A B. Denia Duran, Duran?
Denia Duran.
Yes, correct, chairman.
I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? For the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, sir.
Your name and address, please?
Denia Duran, three hundred Highlands Avenue, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Ms. Duran, could you explain to the board why you're here?
Yes, sir. Um, the board and Mr. Hinterstein were kind enough to a, approve a variance. Back in January twenty-sixth of this year. Um, the, uh, the condition that Mr. Hinterstein provided us with was to. Create and a, um, build an addition. Uh, with a eight-point-five setback to our side yard. Um, at that time, our blueprint for our addition was at twelve feet wide. Uh, creating a six-point-five setback. We then went back to the drawing board and uh brought forth a um addition at ten feet wide. Um, subtracting the two feet, uh, thinking that the setback would be cleared at eight-point-five. Um, unfortunately, we have learned the hard way that. The ten-foot-wide addition does not completely clear that eight-point-five setback. I am here this evening uh seeking a variance to um try to retain our addition. Um, I am in receipt of Mr. Hinterstein's report and I completely agree with him. We should have gotten the addition correct. Uh, to clear that eight-point-five setback, I surely did not want or plan to be before you again. This evening, seeking a second variance. Um. However, just um ha- we've re- based on the uh survey. The way the house is built on an angle, um. That uh, a corner of the addition was not uh cleared by that eight-point-five setback. Um, that is our only saving grace is that the majority of the addition clears. Um, the eight-point-five setback with no problem. However, we are short in that back corner by eight inches of the setback. So I'm here this evening seeking a variance for the eight inches of that corner setback. With my sincere apologies to Mr. Hinterstein and the board for not getting it right the first time.
Thank you. Henry, you have any observations here?
Yeah, I mean, she, she outlined it pretty well. Uh, again. Uh, again, I just want to reiterate, you know, case law is pretty clear on this matter that. You know, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility and their employees slash engineers, contractors, surveys to get it right. Uh, if everybody came in and said, oh, my contractor made a mistake, they did this, they did that. The problem is, we would just have people just doing then whatever they wanted. And a- a- again, and I, obviously, it's eight inches, it's a corner, I, I totally take, you know. Ms. Duran for, for her word, that it wasn't her intention. That being said, you know, the, the mistake happened. Again, the saving grace here is really only impacts a small corner of the, the home. Uh, because the, 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 the home is skewed to the property line uh and the setback line, so it really isn't a huge impact. Um, so, again, I, I think in this particular case. Um, can uh, I think favorably approve this application. Um, with that additional eight inches, I think, being uh de minimis in nature, since it only affects. A, a small portion of the corner of the addition. Um, but again, uh, it's. Um, but, again, uh, it's, it's the homeowner's responsibility to, to manage their employees on, on construction sites, for future reference, and, uh, to, you know, to check what's going on during, during that construction. Uh, but, again, I, I don't, because of the small nature of this, uh, encroachment, I don't see any issues with it.
Thank you, Mister Hintestine, and my apologies again.
And this is only, uh, this addition will only be a one-story addition, right?
Correct, yes, sir.
It'll stay that way, okay, good.
Yes, sir.
Anyone on the board have any questions, comments, or concerns at this time? Hearing none, I'd like to open it to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you, I'd like to close the, uh, public portion, I'd like to make a motion to approve this application, can I get a second?
I'll second it.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Uh, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mister Tillery?
Yes.
Mister Patel?
Yes.
Mister Hidaka?
Yes.
Mister Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mister Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mister Rand, your application, uh, for amended approval has been granted, we will memorialize it in a written document at our next meeting and mail it to you.
Thank you so much. Have a great evening, everyone, thank you.
Good night.
Good night.
Laura, I just wanna verify, number twelve is next, that's, uh, T-Mobile?
Yes, T-Mobile, and then the last one Sanders, and then Kalpech could go back to sleep.
Okay, thank you. Uh, I have number twelve. Twenty-three dash ZB dash forty-five slash four-six B, T-Mobile Northeast LLC.
Uh, thank you, Mister Chairman, members of the board, my name is Edward Purcell, I'm attorney at Price, Mees, Schulman, and Diarmio, uh, here tonight on behalf of T-Mobile Northeast. Uh, with respect to the subject property, that's block fifty-three oh one, lot fourteen point zero four, that's fifty fifty-one South Washington Avenue. T-Mobile currently operates an existing wireless communications facility that is antennas on top of an existing building, uh, by way of a two thousand and three zoning board approval. And that particular building is being replaced pursuant to a redevelopment plan. Uh, and T-Mobile will be, uh, per- will be permitted to place its antennas back onto that building when it's constructed, but, you know, that's gonna take approximately two years between the time that building comes down, and when a new building is, is, uh, replaces it. So obviously, the need for wireless service is consistent. Uh, T-Mobile can't wait for two years, um, to provide service. So, as a stopgap me- measure, T-Mobile is proposing a temporary ballast mount, that tower that's at roughly the same height, as its existing locations, um, to operate while this building is under construction. And as will be discussed, um, T-Mobile will agree to stipulate as condition of the approval, uh, that the approval that we're asking for, for that temporary tower, would expire ninety days after CO is issued for that new building. So again, it ensures it's a temporary approval, this isn't gonna run with the land into perpetuity. Um, just a way of background, the properties in the LI five zone where the use is conditionally permitted, we do need, uh, a few D three use variances with respect to setbacks. And the reason that we need those variances is because we have to place, uh, the antennas, the towers, towards the edge of the property, in order to permit the construction of the new building. But, uh, as will be discussed from our perspective, it's important to keep the facility here on this building, uh, at the same heights, uh, that, that already, that, 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 that is currently located on, in order to provide a comparable coverage, uh, to what exists today. Uh, we do have three experts that are gonna provide testimony tonight, there's John Bosco, he's our engineer, Daniel Check, our, our, he's gonna provide radio frequency testimony, and then Tim Cronk, our planner, is gonna be providing planning testimony. With that, I'd like to move on to our first witness, John Bosco.
Mister Bosco, are you present? Is Mister Bosco present?
John, can you hear us?
Yes, you're good, John.
Hey, could you raise your right hand? Do you swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? I'm having trouble hearing Mister Bosco.
Yeah, he's very loud.
John, can you get closer to your mic?
Is this better?
Yes.
Little bit, yeah. Uh, Mister Bosco, could you provide your qualifications and experience with respect to engineering?
Yes, I have a, uh, BS degree in civil engineering from Lehigh University. I have, uh, over forty years of experience, including fifteen years in the telecommunications industry, and I am a registered professional engineer in the state of New Jersey.
I think his credentials are good, you can proceed as an expert.
Okay, uh, Mister Bosco, could you, you know, provide your testimony, review the surrounding areas, the conditions of the site, and so on and so forth?
Yes.
And feel free to share the screen and show the plans, what you've provided to the board.
I will do that. What we have on, on the screen is the set of plans prepared by my firm, French and Parello Associates, describing, uh, as Mister Purcell indicated, the, uh, existing conditions and the proposed, uh, location of the temporary tower on the subject property. Here you can see a detail showing the proposed temporary tower, and what's called a ballast frame, uh, at gra- at grade, which will support the tower, and, uh, support it against, uh, any wind loads. These are the proposed antennas, which will be placed on the, uh, tower, a total of twelve antennas. These antennas are existing on the roof of the existing structure, which, as Mister Purcell indicated, will be demolished. So the exact same antennas will be relocated, once the temporary tower is installed onto the new tower. These are details of the equipment cabinets, supporting the antennas, and a detail of the ballast frame base.
Alright, Mister Bosco, can you just begin, just talk about the review of the surrounding areas to, to orientate the board to the location of the site?
If we go back to the, uh, plan view, uh, you can see the subject building, uh, in the center of the plot. Uh, you can see Interstate two eighty-seven to the right, and Washington Avenue at the bottom of the sheet. Uh, there are adjacent, uh, industrial, commercial buildings, to the left of the subject property, and then a small, uh, residential area, in the upper right corner of the pla- of the plan.
And the site's located in the, uh, LI five light industrial zone, is that right?
That is correct.
Okay, the parcel is approximately ten point one acres in, in size?
That's also correct.
And there is an existing office building on the property, that's what's in the center there?
That's what's located in the center, correct.
And there's antennas on that building, do you know the height of those antennas, is it fifty-six point nine feet?
The center line of the antennas is at fifty-six point nine feet above grade.
And how's access provided to the property?
Uh, paved driveway from Washington Avenue.
Right, it's South Washington Avenue, I believe, correct?
That, that's correct.
Yeah. And what's the purpose of the temporary tower?
Temporary tower will provide a temporary location for the existing antennas, which will be removed from the existing roof of the existing building, uh, before that building can be demolished. It'll be, as you said, approximately two years to demolish that building and then construct a new warehouse on the property.
And the, and the, right now, the interior build, the interior portions of the building are being demolished, is that, is that correct?
That is in progress, that's correct.
And, uh, it, the, the actual building won't be demolished until the exterior, you know, until the temp tower is up and the antennas can be removed from the existing building, is that right?
That's exactly the purpose of the temporary tower.
Yeah, um, and the antennas will play, be placed at, you know, when they come back to the building, once it's constructed, the new building, antennas will be placed at fifty-seven feet, on the new permanent building, the new warehouse, is that, is that correct?
On the new building at fifty-seven feet, correct.
Okay, alright, so the antennas are staying at, at essentially the same height, going from the existing building, to the temporary, and then back to the new building, is that right?
Three, three steps, yes, that's correct.
Okay, are there any util- utilities in the property that impact our installation?
Uh, there are none.
And why is the, why is the, why is the ballast mount tower being placed at the edge of the property as opposed to, um, a, location on the property where it would comply with all setbacks?
Well, a- as you mentioned, there's gonna be quite a bit of demolition and construction activity, uh, where the existing building is now, so, to get the tower and the antennas, uh, away from that activity, we selected the, uh, location, uh, to the far left, in the parking lot on the plan there. Uh, and that will allow all the demolition and construction ac- activity to take place without interference.
And that, and that location is sort of on the far extreme away from the, the residential zone at the property of us, is that correct?
It's the furthest away from that residential area.
Yeah, okay, and the ballast mount blocks, can you talk about those dimensions, what the purpose of the ballast blocks is?
Yes, the, uh, the ballast frame itself is fifteen feet square. Uh, the ballast blocks are large concrete blocks, which are needed to resist, wind loads on this tower to prevent overturning.
And that's an incredible, no, the, that, that's a very, those are very large and weighty, correct? Those, those ballast mount blocks, those, those aren't going anywhere, I would say.
Necessarily, uh, uh, quite large in order to resist the wind load overturning moments.
And will the equipment, um, and if that, that is required for the, for the antennas be placed on top of the ballast mount blocks?
Yes, they will.
Okay, uh, is there a generator for this site?
There is no generator proposed, uh, it will only be battery backup.
Okay, and can you talk about the, the chain link fence, uh, that's gonna be around the, uh, the ballast mount blocks? And perhaps maybe you can move to the portion of the plans for that shown?
You can see on this, on this sheet, uh, we will have a seven-foot temporary chain link fence, uh, around the ballast frame. This will be twenty feet by twenty feet, the dimensions of the chain link fence.
Okay.
And that, that is shown on this, on this particular plan.
And with respect to the temp tower, the site's, uh, unmanned, is that, is that right?
The site is unmanned, uh, it's monitored electronically remotely, uh, and it will be visited by a technician approximately every four to six weeks.
And have you prepared or reviewed a structural analysis for this proposed ballast mount tower?
Yes, we have reviewed the structural analysis for the tower.
And will the applicant provide that structural analysis to the township as a compliance item?
That's correct.
I think you, you would have to provide that anyways when you pull construction permits, is that your understanding?
I'm sorry?
I said a structural analysis is even, is generally required with respect to, uh, you know, pulling construction permits, is that, is that your understanding? That's correct.
That's correct.
Alright, uh, is the tower designed in accordance with all applicable code, code requirements?
Uh, yes, it is.
And what happens if there's a failure with respect to the tower?
Well, it's a, in the very unlikely event of a failure, uh, take, keeping in mind that these structures are designed for, uh, very high wind loads per the, uh, TIA two-two-two, uh, antenna code, uh, in this case, a hundred and thirteen miles per hour. Uh, but if there were a, a, an overload condition, uh, the most likely failure scenario, would be a buckling within the shaft of the tower, uh, such that you would have in effect, uh, what will look like a bent drinking straw, it would fold at that point of failure, and basically, uh, the, the upper portion would be, would be hanging, uh, onto the shaft.
Okay, uh, can other cellular, cellular communications carriers co-locate onto the proposed tower?
It's, it's possible, it's, it's probably not likely, uh, due to the fact that there are no other, existing carriers on the existing building roof. There's certainly capacity in the, uh, temporary tower, should, uh, a co-location be required, but it's, it's not in the plans, and, uh, a- as I said, probably unlikely.
Will there be any ground disturbance or excavation related, related to the project?
Uh, no, the, uh, ballast frame will be placed on the, uh, existing paving parking lot. There'll be a, uh, six inch thick layer of leveling stone placed before the ballast frame is, located on the parking lot pavement, uh, and that is the only, uh, activity.
Alright, uh, just moving on to the zoning requirements in the LI five zone, could you go over, you know, what the applicant is requesting tonight and what, what variances are needed?
We're requesting, uh, minor site plan approval and variance relief, uh, specifically approval for minimum side yard setback. Uh, the code requires fifty feet and T-Mobile proposes seventeen and a half feet, to the nearest point of the ballast mount frame, and twenty-five feet to the tower itself. Uh, D three conditional use variance relief, code requires a minimum setback of a thousand feet, to the nearest residential property line. T-Mobile proposes a setback of five hundred and fifty-three feet, from the nearest corner of the ballast frame. Also a minimum setback of two hundred feet from all property lines. T-Mobile proposes a setback of seventeen and a half feet at the nearest, uh, property line on the left side of that plan we looked at. Height variance relief, code requires a fifty-foot maximum height for principal and accessory structures. T-Mobile proposes sixty-one and a half feet in height to the top of the antennas.
Okay. And is it, with respect to the code's definition of a minor site plan, the code defines a minor site plan as development that is less than ten thousand square feet, is that correct?
That's correct, and we are, we are well less than that.
Okay, and that's why we're applying for a minor site plan, is that right?
Also correct.
Yeah, uh, can you just go over the lighting and impact on neighboring properties?
The, uh, only light, re- light proposed is a work light, uh, near the chain link fence. Uh, this will be pointed downward, and this light is on an automatic timer, so it shuts off, uh, within the appro- within the selected time.
As far as, uh, you know, technicians, when they come to visit the, uh, the, the, the site, uh, are there, is there parking spaces available?
There are, uh, many parking spaces on the existing, uh, parking lot, which will be used by the technician.
Correct, okay, and then, uh, is, is there any impact on trees with respect to the proposed, um, ballast mount tower?
There's no, no, uh, trees are anticipated to be, uh, removed, uh, during this process.
And can you again explain the process for placing the applicant's facilities from the existing office building to the temp tower, and then back to the new building?
E- exactly, as we said, the existing towers, existing antennas on top of the existing, uh, building roof, will remain there while the temporary tower is being installed. Uh, at the time that the temporary tower is complete, those antennas will be relocated, through the temporary tower, and demolition of the exterior of the existing building can begin. The construction of the new warehouse will then begin when it is complete and the roof is ready. The antennas will once again be moved off of the temporary tower, to the roof of the new warehouse.
And what is the applicant's procedure for snow removal, for providing access to the site, if there's snow on the ground?
Uh, either the, uh, technician, the T-Mobile will hire an outside company to plow, or it's possible that, uh, they will. Or it's possible that uh they will uh plow themselves uh i- in case of snow.
And will the removal of the monopole, the ballast mount tower include restoration of all areas and removal of all the equipment?
That's correct.
Alright, uh, Mr. Chairman, uh, that's all I have for Mr. Bosco.
Thank you, Mr. Bosco. Next, please.
Um, does, does any member of the board or the public have any questions for Mr. Bosco or Mr. Chairman, or do you want to do that all at the end?
I'd like to do the questions at the end, Mr. Canely.
Sure, okay.
That's fine.
Okay, thank you.
Alright, uh, next I'd like to call Daniel Check. He's our.
Hello?
Yes.
Could you raise your right hand? Where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
Uh, sixty-three Beaver Brook Road, Lincoln Park, New Jersey.
And your, your name and still the last name, please?
Daniel Check, C Z E C H.
Thank you.
Alright, Mr. Check, can you go over your qualifications and experience?
Yeah, so I have a bachelor's degree in engineering from N G I T with an emphasis on communication systems. I'm experienced in running propagation analysis on wireless carriers and I've calculated several R F emissions for FCC compliance.
Mr. Check is, is you're uh. Uh, your requisites are excellent, you can be perceived as a expert, thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank, thank you, Mr. Chairman, uh, Mr. Check, have you reviewed? The radio frequency justification report dated October fifth, twenty twenty-two, prepared by Francis Bisholte?
Yes, I have.
Okay, and uh, we've marked that um, that report as exhibit A, A one, uh, Mr. Check, can you just pull that exhibit up and I'm sure you'll use it during your testimony?
Yes.
You can share your screen and show it to everybody.
Mr. Chairman, can I interrupt a second, Mr. Parcell?
Yes, who's the chat was?
This site is part of the system and operating and previously approved by the township. And I, we're moving it, moving the actual facility maybe a hundred or two hundred feet on the existing site. So in terms of proving a need for the facility, it's part of the network now, it would not seem that we would have to reprove this.
Uh, well, that's part of our testimony to say that, you know, we're, it's like a, Mr. Check, I believe, is going to talk about how it's like a puzzle piece and we're just, you know, putting the puzzle.
Moving it over, alright, I'm just trying to um.
Trying to expedite things.
On my eyes on testimony.
Let me, uh, let's, we'll do very quickly with Mr. Check, we'll take out the bells and whistles, try to get through it.
Thank you.
Alright, um, Mr. Check, can you briefly review how, well, actually, you know, Mr. Check, can you just kind of go over? Um, using your exhibits, can you identify the existing coverage, um, the coverage with the sites decommissioned and the coverage of with the proposed sites?
Yes, so if we take a look at the map titled T-Mobile's existing twenty-one hundred megahertz LTE coverage. This shows all the existing on-air sites that are located. On the map, they're shown with dark blue markers, so in the center of the map, we have site N J zero six four four two. From the northeast, we have N J zero six five two eight, from the east, we have. N J zero six two four zero, and from the west, we have N J zero six nine five five, and coverage is shown with a light blue. Uh, hue showing in building commercial coverage and light green showing in building residential coverage. Then we take a look at the next exhibit, we have T-Mobile's existing twenty-one hundred megahertz. Coverage with outside N J zero six four four two, that is the rooftop mount. And then we could see that much of the coverage in the center of the map is lost and gaps are created. Uh, these bound, these are bound by uh Cumberland Road from the north, Stelton Road from the east, County Road six oh nine from the south. Gatler Plain from the the west, and this affects businesses such as Walmart, ShopRite, Cube Smart, several warehouses in the area as well as many residents. That will lose in-building coverage.
And then. Yeah, go ahead, sorry, you can continue.
And then if we take a look at the the next exhibit, we have T-Mobile's existing twenty-one hundred megahertz LTE coverage with the proposed temporary site. And this is showing how coverage is restored once the temporary site is installed, you know, gaps are uh filled as they were before, so. Um, due to, due to the site being uh similar in height and the location being rather close to the existing facility. Um, coverage stays very close to what it was previous.
And then, uh, Mr. Check, could you just go over very briefly in the same way the seven hundred m- megahertz frequency band maps?
Yes, so. Here we have the T-Mobile's existing seven hundred megahertz LTE coverage, uh, some seven hundred megahertz frequency band is. It's able to propagate a little farther due to the nature of the band, but T-Mobile uh still sees a coverage. Uh, lost when uh the site is taken offline, so now if you look at the map. This is T-Mobile's existing seven hundred megahertz LTE coverage without the site. Uh, N J zero six four four two, and we can see that there are coverage gaps that are present in the area. And then, once again, if we take a look at T-Mobile's existing seven hundred LTE coverage with the proposed temporary site, we can see that that coverage is once again restored.
Alright, and then um, and just looking at those those maps, obviously, you know, the, it's a commercial area, right? This, they are the area adjacent to the site, the, and this is what this is, what this is showing is that by, if you want to go back to the the last slide where it shows with the with the gap. Create created, then the that commercial area only becomes suitable for inter-residential in-building residential coverage, is that, is that right?
Yes, that is correct.
You're in one of those commercial buildings who won't be able to have service, basically.
That is correct.
Okay, alright, and then again, just to clarify, is it important from an R F perspective to maintain the location height to the existing facility as much as, as much as possible to keep the necessary coverage?
Yes.
Okay, and it's like a puzzle piece, right? We have to, how you describe it, that, you know, we were, you had a, uh, you know, in two thousand and three, we got the approval to put this here, it's still that puzzle piece. Puzzle piece is coming out, temp tower puts the puzzle piece back, is that a good way to describe it?
That would be a pretty good way of describing it.
Okay, alright, just moving on to the emissions analysis. Um, this was previously sent to the board, are the September twenty-one, twenty twenty-two uh E M F report. Um, Mr. Check, can you show that on your screen?
Oh, one second.
We marked that as, because it's the A two.
I think I, I closed it, I'm sorry, let me uh just open it really quick, quickly.
Okay, um, so. Mr. Check, have you reviewed this report?
Yes.
And can you describe the applicable S E C and New Jersey standards?
So the standards that are used for the analysis are the FCC standards, which are conservative nature. Conservative nature of standards and the New Jersey Radiation Protection Act standards.
Okay. And can you describe the methodology of of the analysis?
Uh, our tests are based on worst case and they're conservative and cumulative, uh, they assume that all the antennas are on and there is no cable loss.
And can you review the findings of the analysis?
So our analysis reported that the proposed T-Mobile facility would emit seven point five percent of the FCC allowable limit, that's thirteen times below. The limit and one point five percent of the New Jersey maximum permissible exposure limit for the general public, and that's sixty-six times below the limit. And obviously, this is well below the limit.
Okay, um, and again, you know, so obviously the existing antennas um comply with those FCC and state requirements, is that, is that right?
That is correct.
And these antennas are on the same height, the same antennas, so it's the same type of R F um in- impact, which is still compliant, is that, is that correct?
Yes.
Okay, alright, thank you, that's all I have for Mr. Check.
Thank you, Mr. Check.
Uh. Dan, you can take that off the screen. Thank you very much. Alright, next, I would like to call Mr. Kronk as our planner.
Mr. Kronk, are you present?
I am present.
Could you raise your right hand, where the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Mr. Kronk, can you just provide your background and uh educational qualifications?
I believe Mr. Kronk has been accepted as a professional planner before this board on several prior applications.
Yes, I have, including the original approval on this building in two thousand and three.
Great, we can proceed.
Thank you.
Alright, uh, Mr. Kronk, have you reviewed the zoning ordinances uh in the redevelopment plan for this site in the master plan?
Yes, I have.
Okay, um, Mr. Kronk, we submitted as exhibit A three um to to the board November twenty-two. November twenty-second, twenty twenty-two, two pho- photo simulations to the board, is that correct?
Two photo simulations, I I believe it's.
We submit, I'm sorry, November, we submitted a photo simulation to the board dated November twenty-second, eight twenty-two, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Alright, and then we marked those as exhibit A three, we also uh submitted an aerial um that you provided as exhibit A four, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, um, Mr. Kronk, can you review the surrounding area and the zoning of the site and then review the photo sims?
Yes, um, subject property is located in the L I five zone, this is a zone that conditionally permits wireless telecommunications. Uh, the proposed application by T-Mobile um does have two de- deviations from the conditional use uh standards. Uh, the first one is the uh, is the setback from the nearest residential property line. A thousand feet is required by ordinance and the proposal by T-Mobile is for a setback of five hundred and fifty-three feet.
Uh. Could you show the area real quick and then the photo photo sensor, so.
Sure.
Suppose now we'll get into it.
Uh, the photo sims are marked A three, I'll actually go to the aerial that's marked A four. And share screen. Do you have that?
Yes, yeah.
Okay. Um, the, this is a uh Google Earth image uh with the date of June nineteenth of twenty twenty-two, it gets marked as exhibit A four. Uh, with the subject uh, uh, proposed tower location represented by the uh red dot approximately in the center of the aerial. A labeled site. Um, the existing building is just south and, south of there, along Washington Plaza Drive. Uh, property abuts two eighty-seven to the south, South Washington Avenue to the west. And uh warehouse building to the north, uh self-storage facility to the northeast. And then a small section of residential properties um along New Brunswick Avenue. This area is zoned R ten and is a little triangle wedge that runs from Stelton Road. Um, along two eighty-seven back to Stelton. Uh, as I mentioned, subject property is in the L I five zone and outside of the R ten properties, pretty much everything else on here is L I five. With a small band of uh G B, general business along Stelton Road.
Okay, just the photos.
Yep, and uh, just uh, so there, there are four yellow dots on the uh aerial photo exhibit here. Uh, A four, those uh represent the four photo locations that I will go to next, uh, the first one is an. A one in the parking lot of the subject property and you'll see that one is illustrative. Um, because it's the only location where the tower and the compound could be seen, so that's actually why I did a simulation from this. Location was because there was nothing off-site where you could get a full view of the tower. Uh, number two is over on New Brunswick Avenue, number three is up on Stelton, and number four is out on South Washington by the intersection of the, the entrance road. Okay, and. Okay, do you have photo simulations? Can everybody see them?
Yes.
Okay, okay, uh, okay, so um, the photo simulations were prepared uh based upon a, a balloon test. Uh, that balloon test was performed on September eighth of twenty twenty-two for the purpose of preparing the uh, the visual then analysis. Um, the red weather balloon that's in the middle of this uh first exhibit uh was floated uh to a height of uh sixty, sixty-one. And a half feet and then photographs um of visible locations in the surrounding area were taken. And those photographs do accurately depict the existing conditions at that time. Uh, so this is the first one that's in the actual parking lot of the property at uh fifteen fifty-one South Washington. And then if we go to the next photo, uh, this is the actual simulation and in the simulation, the red weather balloon has been removed. And the proposed T-Mobile tower at sixty-one feet, six inches with twelve antennas. Um, has been inserted via computer simulation as depicted on the engineering drawings. And as I mentioned, this one was more for the board just to see the whole tower since it was not visible from anywhere off-site. So you can see the twelve antennas, same as the uh, the currently on the uh, the rooftop of the subject property. Uh, the proposed tower and the uh, and the uh, compound and ballast frame that would be visible from this location. Uh, next photo is the one. Uh, next photo location is on. On um, New Brunswick Road, this is a photo location that's seven hundred feet away. This is actually taken, there's a small, there's two residence, residential properties in the R ten that abut the L I five. And then there's a little strip of New Brunswick um that runs uh. Along uh, the, the abuts the subject property, this is kind of right in between those two houses where the road abuts um subject property. Um, and this is a photo from the same date with the red weather balloon visible in the, in the photo. And then on the photo simulation, uh, the proposed tower, um, the portion of the tower that'd be visible from this location has been inserted into the photo. Uh, next one is. Uh, the uh, the location uh from five twenty-one Stelton Road. Uh, this is by the Goodyear Tire. Uh, the just uh balloons just visible over this uh, over this property, over the roof in the center of the. A photo, and then in the computer simulation, what would be visible from this location has been inserted into the photo. And uh, last photo, photo number four, this is the end one from um Washington Plaza in South Washington. Uh, so actually, the, the building on the left here is the adjacent building, uh, not the existing, because we're kind of tucked back in the corner behind here, so we have the balloon. It uh, it's sixty-one feet, six inches, and then the, the tower inserted via a computer simulation for the portion of the tower that would be uh visible from this location.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kronk, can you just go over the zoning for the site?
Yes, uh, as I mentioned, the um, uh, the property is in the L I five zone, we do have the uh, we do have the two conditional. Um. Um, use standard deviations, there's also uh one more variance required in the nature of the C variance. Uh, the underlying L I five zone uh does have a fifty-foot setback requirement. Um, and as was testified to, um, our actual tower is twenty-five feet and then we have seventeen feet, five inches. Uh, that would be from the uh property line to the actual ballast frame, normally in these situations, we're measuring to a tower. Uh, that doesn't have a frame, so we would just normally address the tower setback, but in this one, we just pointed out uh both uh, both distances. Um, that, that we, we have because of unusual situation. And lastly, there is a, a deviation for a height on the maximum height permitted in the underlying L I. On the maximum height permitted in the underlying LI five zone is fifty feet. And as we are proposing sixty-one feet, six inches, so we do exceed the maximum height permitted in the underlying zone by more than ten feet or ten percent.
Mr. Kronk, could we just just go back one to one issue with respect to the approval of the tower? Would T-Mobile agree for the approval of Sunset ninety days after CO is issued for for the new building that's going to be constructed on the site at which time the tenth tower would be removed?
Yes, that is is fine, we are actually working very closely with the the developers, the redevelopers of the site. So we have, we have their latest drawings, we already have, you know, started our drawings because we are going to need to seek approval for the installation on the rooftop. So we will be moving towards filing that, you know, pretty much as soon as we get the stamp on the air, so. We'll be ready to go.
You understand that the property owner is going to be filing for that that approval with the planning board pursuant to the redevelopment plan within the next thirty days, that's the expectation?
Uh, yes, I believe that is the plan.
And Mr. Kronk, we, the applicant marked a letter, August, dated August eighth or August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three, it's a letter from my office to James Clarkin setting forth T-Mobile's position with respect to this, with saying forth that stipulation, is that, is that right?
Yes, that's correct.
Okay, and that was marked as Exhibit A five. And then have you reviewed Mr. Hinterstein's planning memo to the board dated August ninth, two thousand and twenty-three?
Yes, I have.
And do you have any comments regarding to that, regarding that memo?
The only, the only question I had with regard to that memo was under number three. Since the proposal to return to the building, we'll be conforming with the redevelopment plan. I was thinking we would be going to the planning board instead of the zoning board retaining jurisdiction, that was the only question I had on that.
And we, and I have discussed this. That's really not an issue for the zoning board at this time, that that jurisdictional question will be answered at the time in the future when that comes up.
Okay, that was the only question I had regarding that memo.
I think my comment was more in the realm of, for some reason, during construction, the need comes up for the temporary pole to be relocated again for some reason.
This isn't being relocated.
Well, that that's understood, yeah, and that's understood and stipulated too.
I was just, yeah, I was just trying to, I just wanted to address the jurisdictional issue.
So Tim, could you just go over now the your proofs for the D-three use variances, the bulk variances and the height?
Yes, under the, under the D-three, we addressed this deviation under the Coventry Square analysis. Essentially, the fact that the framers of the ordinance are already determined that this is an appropriate location for a wireless telecommunications facility. What we really do focus on in this application is the deviation from those conditional use standards. And as I mentioned, there are two deviations to them. The first is a thousand-foot setback from a residential property line where five hundred and fifty-three feet is proposed. As you can, as you saw on the aerial photograph and the engineering drawings, we are actually, you know, we worked again closely with the redevelop or the property to find a location that was the maximum distance away from the residential zone. There was no place that we could obtain a greater setback than the five hundred and fifty-three feet due to the, you know, proposed total demolition of the existing building and the construction of a, you know, a different building, different configuration. So they had very little space available and, you know, this was the farthest that we would able, were able to, you know, locate this temporary facility. The other conditional use deviation relates to the setback of the side yard setback of where two hundred feet is required from all property lines. And we are proposing seventeen point five to the base of the tower and twenty-five feet to the tower. Once again, this is purely related to the proposed demolition and construction activities. We are, you know, there was no place that we were able to go. And certainly the temporary nature of this installation and the fact that we are only proposing a this location for two years certainly does mitigate that as opposed to a permanent installation. And also the fact that we are, you know, tucked in between two warehousing and storage facilities both in the LI five zone and where this where this use is also permitted. So we are completely compatible with the property lines that we are violating the deviation on the required setbacks there. So as I mentioned, under the Coventry Square, Coventry Square standard, we focus more on whether the subject property would remain particularly suited for this use despite the deviations. And I certainly believe that these deviations for a temporary facility would render this property continued to be particularly suited for the wireless telecommunication installation that is temporary in nature and conditionally permitted on the subject property. With regard to the the negative criteria under the Coventry Square, the analyst folk, the analysis focuses more on the damaging of the character of the neighborhood. And as you saw from the photo simulations, and that's why we prepare them and prepare the balloon test. You certainly can see while there is some visibility to the surrounding areas, including the residential areas of R-ten, that the visibility associated with this installation certainly is not something that will rise to the level of damaging the character of the surrounding neighborhood. And besides the visibility associated with the tower, this use is identical and the equipment's identical to what's been been on this building and broadcasting for for years. We do have somewhat of a D-six deviation, as I mentioned, the underlying LI five zone does have a fifty-foot maximum requirement. We are proposing sixty-one, six, sixty-one feet, six inches. But I really do believe that this would be assumed under the wire, the wireless telecommunications ordinance because in that ordinance, the underlying wireless zone does permit a tower up to one hundred feet for, I'm sorry, a hundred and ten feet for a single use tower. And as was mentioned earlier, this is designed for co-location, not sure that anybody's going to use it for co-location due to the temporary nature of the facility. But we do comply with the height requirements of the of the tower itself. And also the height is actually assumed into the use because if the board were to grant us the the conditional use approval, but we're tell, would tell us we could only have the fifty feet. Essentially, that would render this property useless for this engineering-driven technology. So the height itself does become part and parcel of the use. And and with regard to the the underlying setback variance for the LI five zone, fifty feet is required. Once again, we have the same seventeen point five feet to the ballast frame and twenty-five feet to the tower. I do believe the board can grant that relief under the flexible C-two deviation. And the fact that the purposes of the MLUL would be advanced under under small A, since the site does promote the general welfare, since the carrier does possess the requisite FCC license. I do believe the variance can be granted without a substantial detriment to the public good. Certainly don't believe there is a substantial detriment, really, the only detriment is the visibility and it would not rise to that level. I do believe the benefits of deviation would substantially outweigh any detriment. The detriment once again would be primarily the visibility of the temporary tower and the ability to continue to provide wireless telecommunication services to the the residents, the businesses of Piscataway as well as the traveling public on two eighty-seven. And I do believe the variance would not substantially impair the intent and purpose of the zone planner's owning ordinance since we are a conditionally permitted use at this location. And this is a, the temporary structure and we will be returning to the new building. Certainly would not impair the intended purpose of the zoning ordinance.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Kronk, that's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you. Henry, do you have any comments first?
No, I think all my comments were addressed, and I believe they agreed to the time limit of the ninety days of the variant sunsetting after the ninety days, the certificate of documents. So that satisfies my comments, may want to check with John.
I will, Mr. Chadwick.
Yes, I did submit a report dated July twenty-four, two thousand and twenty-three. The testimony has addressed it, most critical one was a timeframe for what, when the temporary tower would be removed. I don't know, Jim, if you think they should have some kind of restoration bond to make sure it comes down if for some reason the redevelopment plan doesn't go forward.
Mr. Purcell.
So the question is, should we have a require a bond if the redevelopment plan doesn't go forward?
Well, yeah, you're, you're basically at the control of the redevelopment.
So.
For whatever reason, they don't go forward, it doesn't sound like that's the situation, but.
Well, I guess, I guess.
Well, if they don't remove the existing building, we're staying on the existing building. So they're not going to remove the existing building until they have their approval, so we would just stay there.
They remove the building, but they don't build the warehouse.
Then we're coming here for another application.
Yeah. So I, let me.
I don't want to make this a big deal.
All right, you know. Because I did think about that, I did have that thought that crossed my mind, because I know when talking to Mr. Clark and, you know, we were paying this to the CEO. You know, if we could, if we could say that, you know, that we pay it to the CEO, ninety days after the CEO was issued or two years after the the date of the approval, whichever is first, you know, that would probably allay your fear, Mr. Chadwick. If this does not at all move forward.
I would, I would, I give you a little more time, the two years, but that's fine. Either cap on it or this has to go on forever.
We'll make it three years.
I think that's good because if all of a sudden we didn't have a building to go back on, we would, you know, need a little more time to, for a, for a, you know, Plan B.
So we'll make that three years.
Three years or ninety days from the issue of the CEO.
Correct.
Yeah, that's fine.
Yeah, the other comments in the report have been addressed with testimony.
Thank you, John. At this time, anyone on the board have any questions or comments or concerns for these witnesses? Hearing none, I'd like to open this up to the public, anyone in the public have any questions, concerns or comments?
We have, we have several. I have an M, Parik.
Yes.
Mithal Parik, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes, I do.
Thank you. Please, if I have your name, could I have your address, please?
My name is Mithal Parik, I live in four, six, four, seven, New Brunswick Avenue, Piscataway.
Thank you, go ahead.
Okay, so my, I live on the group of residents which was referenced several times in this discussion which leads next to the building and I'm the closest one to the to the tower. I have a question for Daniel Check, since he's the most expert on the radiation. My question is, what is the safest distance to live from this existing antennas? According to the, you mentioned some Radiation Protection Act.
Yes, well, the FCC has done significant amount of research on whether RF emissions are safe. So FCC has many studies that prove that to that limit, there, you will be safe in the the region.
So, but what what is the limit, what is the distance? Is it hundred feet, thousand feet, there should be something, right?
Yeah, no, Mr. Check, I understand, Mr. Check, I think what he's asking is, is that there's a, you know, the SEC says you can't get, you know, right up against the antenna, correct? That there are certain spatial distance at which point it's it's safe. And can you comment on what that, what that would be in this case?
Yes, that is correct, you can't be standing directly in front of antennas, that is not safe due to the exposure being so high when you're so close. But that is not possible, given that this structure is mounted sixty feet in the air. So there's no way that the general public would ever exceed the limit.
Okay, so you mean to say that I I live, when I, when I measured it on the Google Maps, I live around seven hundred feet from the antenna. And honestly, I I just moved two years ago and I didn't know that there is an existing antennas on the existing building. Otherwise, I wouldn't have been moved here. But now it's, it was like five hundred feet from my house. So my question is, is five hundred feet distance from my house is safe to live from the antennas? Because I have four-year-old daughter and I, I'm, me and my wife both work from home, so we are practically twenty-four hours, three sixty-five days from home.
The RF emissions inside your home would be significantly less. These RF emissions are calculated if you were standing outside of your house. But inside your home, the the values that I've provided today, they'll be even lower. So you would be, you would be safe in.
Okay, so.
Yes.
I'm, I am safe in my house, lower, higher, I don't know about the values, but in short, I'm safe in my house.
You're, you're safe anywhere in that you could achieve any location and on the general, like, where the general public can be, yes, you are. I've basically done, I've assured that these calculations are correct and that you will be safe, yes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other, from the public, any other hands up?
Yes, there is, oh, they, they brought their hand down. There was a Bob Sisk, I don't know if he still wants to speak. And his hands back up again, yes, Bob Sisk.
Mr. Sisk, I need to swear you in, could you raise your right hand? You swear that the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
Yes.
Your name and address, please?
My name is Bob Sisk, my address is forty-six, thirty-five, New Brunswick Avenue.
Thank you.
Yeah, I'm the, I'm the yellow number two on your map. And myself and Mr. Kronk, I think, are the only two that were at the meeting in two thousand and three when we discussed this. And the question came up about the safety, obviously, for RF frequencies and what do you have for data? And obviously, at the time, he said, we don't have any, it's new technology, new and emerging technology, I believe, is the sentence that he said. And so now we have twenty years, it's gone by, can you show me the data and the studies that have happened between then and now on the safety of the RF frequencies?
Well, Mr. Mr. Sisk, I think Mr. Check would be the person to, if you have any questions about RF safety, Mr. Kronk is our planner. So Mr. Check, would you like to respond to that?
As I stated before, you know, the FCC has the the limit they have set that they deem as, based on their countless research, that they deem as safe. And according to our calculations, you should not be concerned of RF emissions at the time. As, you know, our emission report shows that we are well below the limit.
Are you aware that the limit in the United States is sixty times greater than any other country? According to the FCC's numbers.
Now, I'll just say that, you know, from a legal perspective, you know, that the pertinent question is, what is the FCC standard here? You know, the Telecommunications Act says that that's the only, the only applicable question in these cases is what is the SEC standard and do we need that standard, any other consideration of health and safety impacts is, you know, not to be considered by state-level governments and acting on these applications?
Yeah, and I'm impressed, you pulled together some very smart people, I'm definitely not one of them, I'm just trying to take care of my family. We moved here twenty years ago, this tower will stare right into the bedroom of my son. There's a lot of neighbors here that moved out because of what was going on there right after it happened. And, you know, it's, it's going to be something we're going to be staring at, I mean, I could throw a baseball from his bedroom window and hit that tower. It's, you know, it's, and you described the safety is based on the distance from the tower and that's half the truth. The other half is time, it's distance and time is what creates safety. So if you're far away, but you're there for a really long time, you're gonna absorb the same amount of frequency. So that's why we're, we're concerned. And now what you guys are proposing, and I use the word minor and subtle and small changes, and I really want the board to think about this for a second. They're not, they're not. You're talking about twenty percent taller. You're talking about seventeen feet from two hundred feet. You're talking about major changes and then we get to look at, we're only talking about the visible looking at it, but now being exposed to it for two full years. That tower is way bigger than the one that's sitting on top of the building and you guys promised that you would cover it last year for this to get approved by the board. They said, okay, can you build some covers around it so the tenants don't have to, so the neighbors don't have to stare at it? And they did. They built boxes around it. Now this is just gonna be a a pure tower standing straight up for everybody that pulls in and wants to buy a property and that neighbor go, whoa, we're out of here. And, you know, I know I saw the one picture there where it didn't look like a big deal, but that's not for my property and it's even worse for my property. Um, our request is that you take your tower and go over across the street to a, the new warehouse that's there and just put it there. You'll still have the same puzzle piece that you need. You'll still have the same colors on your map and you'll still be able to compete with AT&T for the space. It's across the street. That's all we're asking. Don't put the temporary one in the parking lot staring back at us. Move it across the street and put it on the building that's there. And you might find out you like that even better and make it permanent. They'll enjoy the revenue the same way paychecks enjoy the revenue for all these years. And the, and the township of Piscataway won't be losing anything. That's our request. And can, and, and who would, you know, who is going to accept the responsibility for the safety of the residents? Is it T-Mobile or is it the township of Piscataway?
Do you have anything else, Mr. Sisk?
Uh, just waiting for the answer to that question.
Uh, that question cannot be answered.
Uh, why not?
Can't be answered. I'm the board's attorney. I'm telling the board it can't be answered.
Can, can the executives from uh, T-Mobile and, and the hired help here answer that question?
The board, I, I'm, I'm telling the board that that question cannot be answered. Nobody has to address that anymore.
If you have anything else. So would you answer that question?
I said to Mr. Purcell, he's not to address it anymore, Mr. Sisk. Do you have anything else?
No, sir.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Buckley, are there any other hands up at this time?
Yep, now we have more. Kelly Haybor, Haybor? I'm gonna say it wrong. I apologize.
That's okay. It's Kelly Haybor.
I was close.
Ms. Haybor, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand?
Yes.
Testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
I do.
Your name and address, please. I have your name and your address, please.
Uh, my name's Kelly Haybor, H E Y B O E R. I live at fifty-seven School Street, Matutian, and my family owns a house at forty-six twenty-two New Brunswick Avenue.
Thank you.
Uh, I had two questions. The first one is um you said that this will be a temporary tower that would be taken down within ninety days of the CO of the new building and then the question was rightly raised, what if the new building doesn't get built? Or what if, you know, they don't get the financing and, and don't build? So you mentioned three years that it would be up. Um, so would it be whatever comes first?
Yeah, whatever comes first.
Okay. And my second question is, um, why this particular location? Why not move the tower to the front of the property closer to Washington Avenue where it would be further from the residences?
Mr. Kronk, you want to speak to that?
Sure can. Uh, the, uh, the reason we could not get any farther away, esp- especially closer um to the front of the building is due to, one, the demolition of this building and then the construction process for the new building. They're not gonna be exactly in the same footprint and there's no ability to move the tower once it's up. So it's, it was due to the um uh, construction requirements of the property owner that's redeveloping.
And.
This was the max, this was the maximum location, maximum distance from the residential zone that we could locate it without interfering with operations or requiring it to be moved, which can't be done after it's up.
Um, because this is in view from my, from my property, my family's property, from our second floor, this, we have a picture window. This is directly in view um from there. So anywhere else on the property would be better for us. I know it's a visual problem. Um, and lastly, was.
But all, just one other thing is you're saying in the front of the building, when they tear down the building, you're not gonna have a building there to block it either. So I mean, tucked over there, at least there's some vegetation, you know, in that little, you know.
Well, there's, there's no vegetation in the air. There's no vegetation.
But it's, it's a short tower, so there is, yes.
It, it's closer to us than it could be. Um, and lastly, uh, was, was anything explored moving this to a neighboring building where it could be covered up as it was on the previous building?
Uh, and with regard to temporary facilities, um, using the existing buildings is not feasible. Uh, there's, there's just uh too much uh, you know, modification uh required when this type of insulation goes into a building. So the temporary structures um normally are you know, some type of ballast pole or you might have seen the uh, the cows, the cell on wheels. Those are the type of structures we use for temporaries, but modifying buildings in temporary nature is just not feasible.
Not feasible, meaning it in terms of cost?
It takes, it takes, you know, the, the time and the modification of buildings to put up a temporary, it's just not, it's not practical.
Um, okay, and I just asked the board to consider the neighborhood that surrounds this and, and where it looks like we're already getting a, a warehouse coming our way. Um, whether we want it or not, so I'd ask you to consider uh the people in the neighborhood and, and what this will look like visually for us for the next several years. Um, but thank you very much.
Thank you.
Ms. Buckley.
Uh, one big name, Willum Makita?
It's William Makita.
Okay, it's one big word, sorry.
Mr. Makita, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth? I do. Your address, please. Twenty Woodlake Drive, Piscataway. Thank you. Mr. Kronk, you, you talked about the uh, construction requirements. I mean, I've, I've seen the building. I know where the area is. I don't understand it. It's a big parking lot. What are the construction requirements that prevent it from being close to the Washington Avenue?
Right now, in front of uh, the existing building, um that, there's not much space. That was never, there was just no way from a construction perspective. I'm not building the new building. I had to work in conjunction uh with the redevelopers of the property, but that was an area that we were not able to go do due to um, I said, the demolition, construction, uh staging, mobilization. They have all that already uh laid out, the property that they need to use for their, their activities.
Listen, this is, you have a, I think, if, if I'm correct, the, the um the tower that your, the temporary tower is more in, I guess, would be the back of the building towards New Brunswick Road. I, I still understand, it seems like it's a, a pretty large, so it's, it's a somewhat large parking lot. I don't understand why it can't be towards the front. And they have the, 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 the area, you know, to the side and, and closer to the back where you, you're putting the um, the tower.
I don't, did you see, did you see the aerial photo before?
I did.
Where it's located? We're really, we're really not towards New Brunswick Avenue. Uh, we're located to the north. We're tucked in between the warehouse uh, building on South Washington and the uh, the storage facility and that little cutout in the parking lot. You want me to pull that aerial up again?
Go ahead, pull it up, please.
Sure.
I'm, I'm a lawyer, so I'm used to this.
Oh, wrong one, sorry. Okay, now I gotta share that.
I do many zoom depths, so I know, I, I.
Okay. Okay, so uh, you see where the, where the red dot is labeled site? Okay. So we're really not moving. I mean, currently the antennas are on the building. We're not moving towards New Brunswick Ave. Actually, some of the antennas are probably gonna be twice as far from New Brunswick Ave as they currently are. Um, in the, in the temporary situation, we're moving farther away from that uh, the R-ten zone.
So I can see where, so number two is where New Brunswick Avenue is, right?
Yes, that was the photo location from New Brunswick Avenue, yes. Yep, this is New Brunswick Avenue in the R-ten zone and then everything, the subject property and the surrounding properties are all LI five uh, zone properties. So the existing antennas are on the building here which is about half the distance to New Brunswick Avenue as the temporary facility is over here.
Why, I mean, it, it, there's a thousand feet variance for a reason. Why does it have to be reduced to five fifty-three? Why couldn't you just do it? I mean, you, you talk about construction requirements. It seems it's the construction requirements, not by, you, you know, something that it has, it, it's in your purview. It's, it's in the the redevelopers' purview, but I still don't understand why you just couldn't comply.
I don't believe there's any place on the property, even though we have a ten-acre lot where we could uh meet a thousand-foot setback um, from the R-ten zone. As you can see, right now, we're from New Brunswick Avenue. We're on the farthest part of the property at five hundred and fifty-three feet. There's no place we could meet that thousand-foot setback.
And now why, why sixty-one feet versus fifty feet?
For, oh, the height, um, we are match, actually matching the, the existing height of the antennas on the building. So the antennas essentially are gonna remain the same height uh as they are on the existing building in the temporary scenario. And then when they return to the new building, we're maintaining the same uh footprint. We're not trying to gain additional coverage in the temporary scenario. We're keeping it the same.
But even if you had done, had you done any studies to say, you know, what's the coverage at fifty feet versus sixty-one feet?
That's not, Mr. Kronk.
We're match, the, if the heights to say what was on the building before and what was required and what's been exist, in existence for twenty years, we're matching that. Like the RF engineer said, we're taking a, a piece out of the puzzle and just putting it back in the practically the same spot.
But you're also, you're asking for, for a variance to, to raise it. So that's, I guess, the, the variances are there for.
Well, okay, put it this way. As I mentioned, the underlying zone, the LI five zone, has the fifty-foot height requirement. But if you go to the Wireless Telecommunications Ordinance, the conditionally permits this use on this, at this location, at this property, in this zone. And that actual ordinance supersedes the underlying LI five zone, that ordinance allows a hundred and ten feet at this property for a tower with one carrier on it. So we might be.
You don't need this variance then.
I, it's, it was it's called, well, you're an attorney, belt and suspenders. That's what we're doing.
Why are you here then? You don't need the variant.
Well, we still had, we still had, we still had deviations under the conditional use standards, but you're addressing the height and why we don't go lower. I'm telling you, we can actually go higher under the Wireless Telecommunications Ordinance on this property.
Except you're still asking for a variance of more than, you know, eleven feet.
From the underlying LI zone, when the, when the specific Wireless Telecommunications Ordinance actually does supersede it, if.
Okay, so you're saying that you don't, are you, are you now stating that you don't need it? Is that where?
We're just covering.
Originally. Okay.
He said that in his testimony that he didn't.
Mr. Kronk has not changed his testimony. He said that originally. Okay. Good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Buckley, are there any more hands up?
You're muted.
No, I know. I hit the button. It just, I didn't quite get hard enough. It's getting tired. Um. Mr. Perry, he already spoke. I don't know if he's allowed to speak again. I thought it was one turn, but.
If everybody else has spoken and you wanna let them go a second time, you may.
Okay, so he's the last one.
Okay, uh. Hi, I'm, I'm here again. I, I have, like, I heard the discussion and I I, I have a request for Mr. Daniel Check. If he can send me some sort of uh, of a written uh, study or anything that I am safe in my house, having a tower seven hundred feet from my house. Uh, I'm exposed to a radiation. That would be really appreciated. Is it possible?
The, the RF reports are on file in the zoning board office and you can make a request uh through an Oprah request for a copy of that.
I, I have that, but it doesn't say anything that I am safe. Uh, the residence property as safe from the distance of the antennas. So if, if, if there is anything that Daniel Check can provide as a written document or a study that certain distance from the antennas are safe to live, I'll really appreciate it.
Uh, yes, sir. Well, first off, Mr. Perry, we can't provide an individualized study for your particular property, but I can, Mr. Check can speak to the fact that, again, you know, the report has been done. And Mr. Check, can you speak to what the, what the, what the effect is or how you would view um the, the radiation to Mr. Perry's property, given, given what's in your report?
Uh, I mean, I, I can provide uh FCC um, studies that would uh, further affect what he's asking. The.
Okay, so how should I, uh, how should I get, should I send my email address to uh, Ms. Laura?
Yeah, Daniel. Hey, Dale, we provide the IFRF reports. That's, that's what we do. You know, the single RF report to the board.
Okay, and my last request to the board of members. Please consider, like this tower, if, if, please consider to vote, like uh, if this tower was placed near your house, what would you vote? Well, how would you vote? How would you react to that? I'm a, I'm proud resident of Piscataway. Please consider the safety of the residents of Piscataway before voting is, voting uh, to this request. Please consider that this tower is next, like, when you are voting, please, I, I don't know what the right words, but uh, please consider when you're voting that if this tower is built next to your house, how would you react and how would you vote? That's all my, my, from my act. Thank you. I'm really nervous about this, being a, being a dad of four-year-old daughter.
Thank you, Ms. Perry, for your comments. Ms. Buckley, anyone else?
No, no more public, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. I would like to close the public portion of this request. And I would like to make a motion to approve this, to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second.
Thank you, Kalpech. Will the secretary please hold the role?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hadaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman.
Yes.
Mr. Purcell will memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Thank you very much. Have a good evening.
Thank you. Good night.
Thank you. Good night. Going, moving on to number thirteen, twenty-three ZB. Two-three V. I'm, uh, Marika Sanders.
Uh, I'm sorry.
Good morning, I understand.
You are tired, Mr. Weissman.
Yes.
Good evening, uh.
Hi, John.
Hi, John Sullivan from the offices of Bastola and Sullivan, representing the applicant. Uh, the applicant is the owner of the property at three thirty-nine Rock Avenue. That is a property that is fully improved with a two-story uh, two-family dwelling with an attached garage, um, a shed on the property and then the related site improvements which includes a driveway at the front of the dwelling and a parking area to the rear. Property situated in the R seven-point-five zoning district. Uh, that, as we know, that district allows single-family homes, but it does not allow a two-family home as a principal permitted use. Um, we feel that this two-family use is a legal non-conforming use in the area. Um, and we are seeking a, first, a certificate of non-conformity with regard to the original two-family use. However, there was an addition put on the building uh, somewhere in the nineteen nineties. So we are also requesting a D-two variance for an expansion of a non-conforming use. We have submitted a number of documents along with the application, including the municipal tax records which take us back um, showing that as, as early as nineteen fifty-six. This was listed as a two-family dwelling on the property tax card. We provided a copy of the deed as well as a photograph. We provided construction permit records uh, to show that the addition was put on with the permit. And also that recently um, a permit was issued to install two water heaters and two boilers on the property. We provided the survey and floor plans and we provided um certificates of continuing occupancy for each unit which were issued in January of this year. Our witnesses tonight are Scott Sanders, who is the applicant's husband. And I believe it's Alex Kennedy who's gonna act, serve as our professional planner. If I may, I would begin with Mr. Sanders.
Mr. Sanders, could you raise your right hand? You swear the testimony you're about to give should be the truth?
I do.
Your name and address, please.
Your name and address, please.
Scott Sanders, four one seven Center Street, Piscataway, New Jersey.
Thank you.
And now, Mr. Sanders, your wife is the owner of this property?
Yes.
And how long has she owned it since?
Since twenty fourteen.
And she took title from her father, and how long did he own it since?
Since nineteen eighty-five.
And he took title from actually his son, and do you know how long he owned it since?
I believe it was nineteen eighty-three.
So the property's been in the family since nineteen eighty-three?
That's correct.
And has it always been used as a two-family?
Yes.
Now, you provided a survey dated January twenty-fourth of twenty twenty-three, and that survey shows the existing home, the driveway, the rear parking area, and a shed on the site?
That's correct.
And all of that is still existing?
Yes.
And what is the total onsite parking capability?
About eight cars. Two in the front and six in the back.
And you prepared the floor plans that were submitted to the board?
Yes.
And you could, could you briefly describe each unit, what it has in terms of rooms?
Um, the first floor has a two bedrooms, a family room, a dining room, and a kitchen, and two baths. The second floor has three bedrooms, eating kitchen area, and a bath.
And does each unit have, have a separate entrance?
Yes.
And are there separate mailboxes?
Yes.
And you had mentioned each one has its own kitchen, restrooms, and things of that nature?
Yes.
Now, with regard to the utilities, um, does each unit have its own hot water heater?
Yes.
Does each unit have its own furnace?
Yes.
And there is no central air conditioning, correct?
No.
And with regard to utility meters for gas and electric, does each unit have its own separate gas and electric meter?
Yes.
And with regard to the water, that's a common meter for both units?
Yes.
And you've had a chance to review the property tax records, and they indicate that this house was originally built in nineteen fourteen?
That's correct.
And the property tax card from nineteen fifty-six and all subsequent property tax cards and records show this as a two-family dwelling?
That's correct.
Now, there was an addition built on the house in nineteen ninety-two?
Yes.
And the records show that a construction permit was issued for that?
Yes.
And can you briefly describe that, the addition, what it consists of and where it's located on the dwelling?
It's on top of the existing garage. Uh, it was built, it's just primarily an extension of the first floor apartment only. It's created a family room. Uh, it has in it a fireplace, a sliding patio door, a door to the front patio or front deck. And that's it, and the entrance from the first floor.
Okay, and that was built over the garage, so it did not increase the, the footprint of the home?
No.
And it did not add any additional bedrooms to the home?
Nope.
And you recently obtained permits to install two water heaters and two boilers in the house?
That's correct.
And in any way of this, you obtained continuing certificates of occupancy issued by the town, one for each unit?
Yes, sir.
And the property is registered as a rental property with the municipality?
Yes, and more registration.
And that is all I have for Mr. Sanders.
Thank you, Mrs. Sanders.
Mr. Sullivan, do you want to call your next witness?
Oh, yes, yes.
Uh, I believe. John, before you start, I, I didn't get, did the addition add bedrooms to either of the units?
No, it did not. It just created a family room for the first floor unit.
So it was always two, two-bedroom units?
Mr. Sanders?
Bedroom on, on the first floor, three bedrooms on the second floor.
Three bedroom. But the addition did not expand the second floor at all?
No, sir, only the first floor has entrance.
Is the basement, is, is the basement used at all as part of the apartments? Or is it just storage and utilities?
Basement is storage and utilities and only used by me.
Okay, is the garage, is the garage in Poncho, right?
The garage is not used for parking. It's also used as storage. That's why I put, you know, material that I had left over from fixing or having things fixed.
Whatever, so it, it, do the, do the tenants have access?
To the garage? No.
No, to the basement?
They could, they, there's a door that they can go into, but they are not, they don't go into it. In other words, they have access to it, but it's not there, they're not using it.
All right, so the addition didn't change occupancy, did not add additional bedrooms?
No, sir.
Okay. Couldn't, all right, I'm sorry, John.
Oh, not a problem. Uh, Mr. Dougherty, are you here?
Yes. Yes, I am. Can you see me?
Dougherty, I need to swear you in. Could you raise your right hand? The testimony you're about to give should be the truth.
Yes.
Your name and address, please.
Alexander Dougherty, last name is DOU G H E R T Y. Here on behalf of McDonne Associates at one-on-one Tripultra Avenue, Suite One A.
Thank you.
Yes.
Uh, Mr. Dougherty, would you state your qualifications for the board?
Certainly, I am a licensed professional planner. My education's at a Rutgers Glosing, with a master's in city regional planning, concentration in development, redevelopment, certification of public policy. Uh, my license PP for New Jersey is good and current, as well as my national ASEP certification. I testify.
Mr. Dougherty, you're, you're acceptable as an expert witness.
Thank you. Now, Mr. Dougherty, you're familiar with the area, the site, and the proposal that we presented to the board?
Yes, I am.
And could you describe the site and the area?
Certainly, if it pleases the board, I do have a visual exhibit packet consisting of six slides of maps and photographs for orientation purposes. And I'll share my screen.
Previously supplied to the board?
I, I don't believe so.
Okay, we're gonna need to mark this as A one, this package, and, uh, Mr. Sullivan, you'll, you'll get a paper copy to the board for the file?
I, I will, yes.
So the first slide, if you will, I'll zoom in a little bit here, is the property in question. We're looking at one tax lot, block two fifteen, lot fifteen point zero one, indicated here in yellow. We're at the corner of Rock Ave and Elk Street. When we look at the surrounding conditions of this, this area, um, it's part of this what we call a cluster of two and three families right here at this corner, as, as well as we can see some scattered throughout the area. Yellow representing one family's, blue, two, and three red. So we're, it's kind of a little bit of a mix. I think it's a healthy balance here. Um, as we've heard, the plan is simply to validate the one-story addition over the garage that was constructed nearly thirty years ago at this point. Um, the addition was basically an extension of that lower unit, as you just heard. Um, there really was no change to the upper unit. The bedroom counts that were on this property remain. As you can see here, we have the garage with the separate entrance here. This is the one dwelling, and then we have the primary dwelling here, the larger structure, again, with its separate entrance over here. When we look at this zone, we are in the R seven point five residential, where two families are not permitted in the zone. Uh, this exhibit here really indicates the, um, I guess, the timeline, if you will, uh, starting from the right on the side here, it's the original structure where these three arrows are indicating, as well as down here, the garage. This addition, second story addition over the garage, is, is, you know, reflective of, of, you know, the construction that took place with construction permits and, and COs as well. This, this detached, now dwelling garage here is that second unit. When we look at the zone relief here, um, section sixty-eight, uh, certification of pre-existing non-conforming use. Uh, and essentially, we like to validate this use and have it on the record, as, as we've just heard real briefly. Um, it's, it's been, uh, it's been existing in the public fabric for quite some time. This fifth slide is more of an aerial top-down, uh, if you will, where we see we have the curb cut in the front, there's parking in the back. Uh, we believe we have a, a healthy balance of all-street parking for these uses. Um, the garage just being used as storage, it's, it's not sealed off. It certainly can, if need be, um, uh, be used in, in the capacity of a garage. This last slide is your, your tax, your tax assessment cards, if you will, outlined in red, if you will, indicates the important information for tonight. As we can see, the, the building classification as a two-family on the top in red, I'll zoom in a little bit here. Uh, we have the building information, the type and use, again, outlined in red is multifamily. Uh, the style, uh, as well, again, multifamily. So it has been identified several times as council has opened with as a two-family um, use here on the site. Nonetheless, um, we'd like to expand upon that, have that recognized and validated, as many of the municipal departments have. The essence of this, if you will, we have the D two relief for the expansion of a non-conforming use uh, for the construction that was after the nineteen fifty-four. As we've heard, that construction took place in nineteen ninety-two. Um, but that being said, the essence of that D two is a little bit more relaxed than that D one uh, for the, um, wholly prohibited use test. The essence of D two test is site betterment. It's not really the question of where the use belongs in the first place. It's about bettering the site and enhancing that site in the undertone of what that, that zone requirement is, which is residential. Um, that's, when we look at that here, we have, um, really a good-looking structure, a good-looking site. Um, I don't believe it takes away from that, uh, these, these two dwelling units, though, on one lot do have unique features that really signify that they are two separate dwelling units. It doesn't really give the impression of your typical two-family, where you have the two doors side by side and, you know, it, it really does look independent but cohesive at the same time, complementary to the primary larger structure. But that being said, when we look at the positive of this application, the addition enhances the living environment. And like I said, overall complements the architecture of the structure. This type of housing is beneficial. We call this the missing middle housing, which fills that gap between the one family and those larger apartment housing complex. We see also, when we look at this, uh, becoming more of a trend in the planning world and zoning reform, taking a, a hold um, across the country, is what we call these accessory dwelling units. Uh, housing is, is, uh, is, is paramount, finding quality housing, a range of housing options. Um, so this really does fit that narrative as well. The project multi-fishing use of land, variety of land uses and positive aesthetics, all the above promote purposes of the municipal land use law. A, G, I, N. When we look at the negative criteria, it was interesting because the use has really been here for quite some time. If there really was a substantial negative impact here, I think overall, um, this would have been addressed uh, by the municipality, uh, early on. Um, I believe this relief at this location be granted without substantial detriment to the public or the zone. Use is compatible with the character of the area, as I showed you on slide two from our density map. We do have a fairly healthy balance. It's not, it's not overpowering, but there, there is a balance here of two families within the area. I think it certainly is compatible with that character, and it's not going to overpower it. We have that little bit of a cluster right there, uh, as we see on the slide. The addition has existed without detriment for decades, as I stated. It certainly is not hidden. This is in the public realm. Um, and if need be for the board, um, for the purposes of, of tonight, for the validation, if the validation wasn't, um, to be recognized that, you know, this was, was here, we can certainly satisfy this under the D one, which is, um, uh, the Medici test, where we believe the site, as, as we see here, is particularly suited. We are in that corner, there is, uh, some existing here, it's not out of character. We do believe we have ample all-street parking to accommodate this two-bedroom build-out, as well as a three-bedroom. When we look at this, the addition, um, to all the special reasons that were cited above, the sites particularly suited for the use, um, really in the context of this neighborhood as well. Uh, it's an easier retrofit, it's compatible with the uses around it. Um, I don't believe this will erode the intent of the zone plan. Again, this has kind of that cohesive look, but identifiable, um, separate indicating dwelling units, which is that single-family zone narrative and undertone. Uh, the negative criteria here, negative criteria for this, um, the enhanced Medici reconciliation and the omission of the use, I think can be justified by the virtue of distinct characteristics at this particular site. The relief relates to a distinct site, not the whole zone. This will not constitute a rezone. And I believe the board can move comfortably and favorably upon this application. Simply, um, at the validation standpoint, as we've heard, this is in the public realm. This is not hidden, there's construction permits, uh, we have separate water heaters, uh, utilities and so forth. Um, we have, uh, COs for the occupancy of the building. Uh, with that being said, I believe the statutory criteria for grant relief, um, had been met and approval would be warranted. And I'll stop there for any crosshair questions.
Are there any questions from anyone on the board? Uh, Henry or Sean, do you have any questions or comments? I don't, I don't, uh, the testimony is addressed, I submitted the report April eighteen two thousand twenty-three, and the issues raised at report were answered by Mr. Sanders. Thank you, John. Henry?
Uh, I'm satisfied with the testimony provided by the planner, uh, justifying the, uh, the expansion. I, I think the two-family use is clearly, um, I think, the, the person shown that it was in existing, uh, pre-existing non-conforming use. So I think that, um, it's appropriate that, on one hand, I think the, the certification, what if the addition wasn't uh, on the home, would have been granted. Um, but again, um, I clearly think with the addition, it's, it's an expansion of a non-conforming use and the testimony, I think, uh, satisfactorily justified, uh, approval of that expansion.
Thank you, Henry. Anyone on the board have any questions? Excuse me? I'm sorry, was someone speaking?
No, I coughed, I'm sorry about that.
Oh, okay. Thank you, Mr. Sanders.
I apologize.
Um, anyone on the board have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time? Hearing none? I'd like to open this to the public. Anyone in the public have any questions, concerns, or comments at this time? Ms. Buckley?
No one, Chairman.
Thank you, Mrs. Buckley. I would like to close the open session, and I would like to make a motion to approve this application. Can I get a second?
I'll second him, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Tillery. Uh, will the secretary please call the roll?
Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? He's still on?
Yes.
Thank you, Mr. Hidaka?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Ellie?
Yes.
And Chairman Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Sullivan will memorialize this at our next meeting and send a copy to you.
Okay, thank you very much, and, uh, this time I will say, everybody have a good night.
You too, thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you all.
Moving on to the next item, adoption of resolution from the regular meeting of July thirteenth.
First resolution is Chad Herbert, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel? Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Uh, next is Kenny Lai, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Next is Paul Oglesby, which was, uh, on approval, Mr. Tillery?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Heyduka?
Yes.
Next is Rick Ursua, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Yes.
Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hey Duka?
Yes.
Finally is Mark Dufour, which you voted to approve, Mr. Tilley?
Yes.
Mr. Mitterondo?
Yes.
Mr. Weissman?
Uh, I had, uh, abstained from that. I had to recuse myself.
Abstain from this. Thank you. Uh, Mr. Patel?
Yes.
Mr. Hey Duka?
Yes.
Those are all the resolutions I have this evening.
Thank you. Uh, can I get a motion to adoption of the minutes from the regular meeting of July thirteenth?
All a favor?
Aye.
Moving on. Uh, a German, can you get a motion?
Yes.
Yes.
Second? Everyone have a good night.
Thank you.
Enjoy the rest of your summer.
Good night, everyone.
Take care.
See you.